Hey, Francisco.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
I'm doing okay.
I know you were on the email with Chuck sent, so unfortunately, his wife had a pretty serious accident, so he's not gonna be able to join us tonight.
Yeah, I was sorry to hear about that. I hope she's okay.
Me too. Yeah, it didn't sound good, but it sounds like she's on the mend, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, so we're missing Chuck two months in a row. That's unfortunate, but hopefully she's all right and things get better.
Good evening, Lisa.
Hi, Ryan. How are you?
Doing good. How are you doing?
They're hanging in there.
My cellar doesn't flood with all the rain.
Yeah, exactly. I'm hoping not to get called into work.
This is Clifton. Anyone hear me? Hey, Clifton. Yep, can hear you.
Yeah, I can hear you, Ryan.
I can hear you.
Ryan, did you get Chuck's email?
Yes, I did. He texted too. So, yeah, I know he's not gonna be able to attend. Unfortunately, his wife suffered a fall and had some serious injuries, but she's on the mend, so he's taking care of her now.
Okay. So I'll put you in charge of everything. Thank you.
If we want to give it just another minute, I know sometimes it takes people some time to get on the teams, maybe get another minute. A lot of others joining them, we can go ahead and start, Francisco.
Sounds good.
Okay, Francisco, in the interest of time, why don't we go ahead and get started? This is the virtual meeting for the P and Z regulation rewrite session. So, Francisco, I'll hand it over to you.
All right, thank you very much. And hello, everyone. Thanks for joining us this evening. We have quite a bit of work to do, so let me go over our agenda, and I take it everyone can see my screen, okay?
Yep, I can see it.
Yeah, okay, very good. First, I'd like to revisit our work plan and schedule. We've had a couple commissioners join us since we developed our strategy and approach for this phase of the work, and I think it's worthwhile to revisit that. Just see where we are, where we are, and remind everyone of our approach in this phase of our work. And then I'd like to talk about some amendments that were passed by the commission over the past several months, and we talked about these a little bit at our last meeting, but I want to provide you an update as to how we will handle those. And then we'll get into really the heart of our meeting this evening, which is to go over our commercial mixed use and industrial zone recommended amendments. So with that said, sorry about our work plan. So I think as most of you, but maybe not all of you are aware, we were taking a two-phase approach to this project, and this project will span three years from beginning to end. The first phase of the project was focused on cleaning up the regulations, updating the document itself, and correcting errors, omissions, and statutory inconsistencies. And that was a tremendous amount of work in and of itself. We spent 15 months on it, and we successfully adopted that first phase. And since then, we're working on phase two, which is intended to address what we're calling substantive revisions, meaning making changes to what's allowed, where it's allowed, how much of it is allowed, and making changes that are potentially impactful to property owners, whether positively or in some cases maybe adversely. And so this work requires careful consideration, and we're taking close to two years to conduct this work, and we're conducting it in a systemic way. So let me walk you through that. As I mentioned, our phase one work spanned about 15 months, and we successfully adopted the current zoning regulation document. And at the end of 2023, it became effective in November of 2023. And so that that set of regulations has been in place now for over a year, and I think have been successfully used by town staff applicants and use a commission to navigate development applications and proposals. Our phase two approach is intended to take a deeper dive on important issues that the zoning covers. And we're about halfway through that. We started with environmental resource protection, sustainability, and resilience, for which we developed a set of recommended amendments. We then moved on to housing and residential districts and uses, and likewise, we developed a number of recommended amendments for that as well. And we're currently more than halfway through our work on commercial, industrial, and mixed-use districts. What is in front of us is to review all of your site design standards, so anything related to how a property or site is used, which includes buffer requirements, parking, and sign regulations, everything that's outside. And that will be followed by our last work cycle. Will be a review of permit and plan requirements, and to some extent, we're doing some of that work already by considering changes to what is required for a use. But this would really focus on the specific requirements and the elements that are required for a permit or a plan, and the procedures and the administrative aspects of the zoning. So within our current 21-month schedule, which began October 2023, and we are aiming to conclude by June of 2025, we've got a three- to four-month work cycle period that includes three to four meetings with you. And that begins with the discovery process, includes presenting you our findings. We, very early in that process, we conduct a public workshop to see what the public's concerns are related to the issue. We come back to you with those findings. We discuss potential amendments, and that's what we did at our meeting last month. And then we develop, we actually write those amendments. We write each recommendation as a standalone amendment into a memorandum that could be moved forward as a motion to amend the zoning regulations. We go through that process. We conduct a public presentation at the end of that three- or four-month period to inform the public as to the recommended amendments that the commission will want to consider at a later date. We then table them so that we can move on to the rest of our work. Now, towards the end of this process, come June, and in potentially expanding out into the summer, depending on how many amendments you want to move forward, and how many you want to move forward at a time, and how receptive the public is to that, we're gonna be in the process of bringing these to a public hearing and adopting them. But our work allows us to really discuss these ideas in open, invite the public in through a number of forums, through the public workshop, through these regular meetings, which are open to the public, through public presentations, and by making all these materials and recommended amendments available on the town's website for months for review. And that's enabled us to receive feedback by way of Clifton, and to take that into consideration, to discuss it at meetings, and to make adjustments as necessary. In some cases, that might involve deciding to permanently table a recommended amendment, right, to abandon it and not to bring it forward, or to make revisions to it. That's the value of this process, of taking our time and being as open as possible and taking everything into consideration. So we've done a lot of work to date. We have a lot of work remaining, so I want to walk you through that. And as I mentioned, each of these work cycles is divided up into about a three- or four-month process, and we're right in the middle, in about month three of this this commercial-industrial zone process now. We held a workshop a couple of months ago, and now we're at the point where we need to find, we need to draft the amendments, right? We're kicking them around right now. We need to commit, figure out what we want to leave behind, and draft them, agree, agree on those, and then move on to our next work cycle. With respect to where we are in this process, we began, as I mentioned, October 2023, and this is how it's laid out through June of this year. And we are now here, and I want to call attention to this because we had to adjust this particular work phase, because this meeting is really an extension of our meeting last month. Our meeting last month was a robust meeting. We're trying to cover a lot of ground. We did not have full agreement on a few of the items. We were asked to reconsider some items. And so now we're, we really need to think of this meeting as a continuation of last month's meeting, which means we have a little bit of ground to make up going into the new year. I've talked to Clifton. He is receptive to, if you are receptive to potentially double-loading a month or two with two meetings to help us get through things. We need to make sure on our end, on my team's end, that we've had ample time to do the work and present it to you. But assuming we're able to do that, we're receptive to doubling up for a month or two to keep our schedule. I do still think it's possible for us to to conclude the bulk of our work by May and be able to move things forward to a public hearing by June, but it requires us to really maintain a very strict schedule and potentially squeeze an extra meeting or two to accomplish that. All right. So, as I mentioned, this commission has adopted a couple amendments.
Are we done talking about that? Can we? Is this still part of that discussion?
Yes, what's the question?
Are we on to item two?
I'm sorry, what is it? Do you want to bring up, Alyssa?
I know, it's like, are we done with that, or is this part of that discussion? The timelines.
The schedule. Is there a question about the schedule?
Oh, I have a lot of questions about, not a lot of questions, I guess, some things, maybe. I am certainly in favor of doubling up on meetings. I think that, and I've said this a bunch of times, I feel really rushed in these two hours, so my suggestion would be to go later and double up because in the commercial-industrial zones, from our last meeting, I didn't think we had any kind of consensus on any zone, well, maybe a couple. But, you know, the HI zone that we've all talked about so much, I would like to devote an entire night to just talking about that zone because that's such a critical zone in town. It came up in every single little group table at the workshop. And it seems like people really said that's where we need to focus and get something going there. And so I'm all in favor of doubling up. I had a question about your budget. I know, you know, do you think you can finish all this work within your budgeted amount? I know that, I mean, I was looking at the budget and how much is spent to date, and it seems like you're way over three-quarters almost of your allotted, I don't know what you say, your budget.
Yeah, we're about 75% spent. That's correct.
Right, so can you finish the next, for the next timeline? Are you, if we add more meetings? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that even if we add more meetings.
With respect to meetings, we don't have infinite capacity to conduct meetings, but if we need to add an extra meeting or two targeted meetings in order to keep our schedule and get the work done, that's what we'll do. But we are, we've got a fixed number of workshops that we can conduct and public presentations, because those are very resource-intensive. But with respect to working meetings with you, with this commission, if we need to add a meeting or two to get it done, then that's what we'll do.
And Francisco, this is Ryan. If I can maybe add something here that might be another possible option to help us in that is possibly starting the meetings that we do have earlier, possibly starting them at 6:00 PM, going to 9:00 PM, so we're adding an extra hour to those meetings. I don't know if that's something that's already been discussed between you and Clifton, and it's obviously something that, you know, the commission would also want to weigh in and agree on. But I think perhaps between those two options, adding an extra meeting here or there, and adding an extra hour to the already existing meetings, do you think that would give us, you know, the flexibility, and you the flexibility you need to get that done by the end of June if we're targeting?
Potentially. You know, Chuck's been very much in favor of keeping meetings to two hours or less. But I'm certainly receptive to starting earlier. I know to end at nine o'clock is pretty late.
Yeah, I did actually speak to Chuck about that, and so, you know, the other option would be to obviously to keep the meeting, have the meeting start at seven and go to 10, which I don't think anybody wants, including myself.
Yeah, no, that's, I get up at four. That's a little tough for me.
Yeah, so do I.
No, I mean, I would rather just throw in more meetings. Sorry, sorry, Ryan.
Yeah, but I just thought it would be worthwhile to put out in front of the, you know, the folks who are on the call today as an option. I definitely think we do need to schedule an additional meeting or two, as you suggested, Francisco, but, you know, also to have the commission think if it makes sense, and if it doesn't, that's fine too, but just another option to put on the table.
This is Lynn. I completely agree that I feel as if the agendas over the last few months have been way too packed and have not allowed for in-depth discussion that leads us to any kind of a decision. So, you know, we do need to make some changes along the way, and, you know, a six o'clock start is a good way to do that. I wonder if there's a possibility of, you know, doing some pre-work, maybe outline some things that can be done outside of a meeting and, or something else, because I'm just not sure another hour is gonna do it as we get towards some of these final topics. And I do think that we're probably gonna have to backtrack on some of the things that we've already talked about because I do feel like we did not cover them completely because we were, we definitely limited by the time.
I agree as well. I mean, I think that it might be helpful instead of having commercial manufacturing everything in one night, like, I don't know, the next meeting, only talk about five zones and five specific zones, and then because it seems like the past couple of meetings we've had, we rushed through everything. We talked about all of them for a little bit. And then we, and then it's like, okay, we can't talk about that for too long, you know, we have to be off by nine. Like I said, I think we need to certain areas that people have identified, the TI 80, TC 80, HI 60, the area by, it's LA 1/3, that area, the one by Taguanc. You know, those areas that we've talked about in the workshop need to be focused on in depth. All those five zones, they weren't, you know, that we could, you know, they're important, but that seems to be almost smaller. But the big zones that we talked about a lot in that workshop, I think we need to have nights devoted to those in particular. And the other stuff, I'm not saying it's not important, but I just think maybe like, let's talk about manufacturing one night. Let's talk about commercial one night, but I feel incredibly rushed and that we're not making good decisions because I don't, we don't have all the information. And so I totally agree with Lynn. If we could have an outline before the commission can do work, that we could have, the commission could have a meeting without you to save you time and money and talk about things. If you send us some ideas, we could have an internal workshop.
Yeah, I think that's a valid idea to put forward. I think we want the full commission to hear it and agree to it. You know, doing outside work, remember, we not only have this, but we may also have the P O C D coming up, so that's gonna probably pull these some folks from the commission. So I want to be cautious and respectful of people's personal time, you know, doing this work. I think, Francisco, I think the two options, and it might be something you can work out with Clifton, is, you know, do you think between adding an additional hour at the beginning, if that works for folks? And then if you guys could determine which, when do you think we need to maybe double up on meetings, like a couple months, you know, beginning, middle, and I'm not sure. Something like that that we could look at and say, yeah, that makes sense and move forward that way.
Okay.
Because in my mind, I see probably four more meetings on commercial. And we don't have four months.
Yeah, I'll just add, we don't have four more months.
Contract for that.
Excuse me?
We don't, we don't have the, we don't have the time dedicated in the contract to accomplish that, so either that's something that I have to talk about with Francisco separately, or maybe, and, you know, in the interest of time and kind of what we're talking about, Francisco's slides, we'll get into this a little bit more. But maybe we pull back on some of the discussions, some of the regulation amendments solely for that reason.
Right, either, right, I would, that's what I was trying to get to with, I mean, not so much with the budget, but the timeline and everything. Like you just said, like, what is in the, when you said it's not in the contract for Francisco's time for, to talk about commercial for four more months, or to extend it longer than June?
Both the breadth, the breadth, the depth of meetings and the number of them, including the workshops, that's not in the contract. So if we had to modify it, that'd be a separate discussion I'd have to have with Francisco and his team. You know, I think for the purpose of tonight, you know, let's go through with what we have, and then if we need to double up on meetings, I can have a conversation with Francisco offline and present that to the commission at their next regular meeting.
Okay, so that'll be on the 7th. That sounds fair. Clifton, I do think that what would also be nice is if you can kind of brainstorm a little bit, you know, depending upon what you bring forward, if we need more time, ways the commission can accomplish things without, you know, without Francisco. You know, I think, I think we've got to consider that, to be honest with you. I think we have to consider it. So maybe that's, you know, based on the conversation you have and bringing that forward during a regular meeting, having some other options available, that might be a good thing to do as well.
Absolutely, Lynn. I'll work on that.
Okay, thanks. Or maybe we knock off that whole last part, like the, whatever, the regulation, the last item, and only get through part of this thing. There's a lot, there's other ways to do it, right? I mean, I think the site plan stuff is important, and I know parking and landscaping and that stuff is big. So whatever that last thing was, administrative items, you know, I mean, it still takes a month, but, you know, if we need that month for something more important, we can just not deal with that part. I mean, just think of things like that. Ways to make this work without us making bad decisions and feeling rushed into things.
So I think we have, Clifton, I think you've got sort of some stuff that you can come the next meeting on December 17.
Yeah, I think, I think I've received the feedback. You know, I'll work with Francisco separately, but I I know Sal raised his hand, so I'd like to have him talk, and then I'd really like to move forward because we do have a packed agenda.
Yep, understood.
So I heard everything that has just gone on. I know that there was a lot of stuff that FHI wanted to present, and they kind of had a schedule, and I think we've gone through a lot of the different zones and, you know, what people want to see. I'd really like to see, you know, from FHI, taking all that into consideration, kind of some of their recommendations right now to kind of help us focus a bit more because, you know, we've had some meetings in EDC, we've had some meetings in planning and zoning, we've had some workshops, and there's been a lot of stuff that has been presented. And I think, you know, we really need to kind of focus in on, you know, what some of the top items are, try to make some decisions from there, and then see what's left over to really talk about. So, you know, I'd like to see kind of what the hit list is from FHI, you know, looking at all of that, and then deciding from there, you know, what else we've got to do.
Well, Sal, I'll tell you what, that's a perfect segue.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. If everyone's comfortable with that, I'll move forward. As I mentioned, and I'll cover this briefly because we talked about it last month. But the commission adopted cannabis regulations in 2022, and those were not incorporated into the phase one update. They are technically on the books and technically effective because they were adopted. So they really need to be incorporated into the document. We agree that the best way to do that, to make sure we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's, is to make a motion at a public hearing to incorporate the previously adopted regulations into the zoning regulation document. So Clifton is preparing a motion for your February meeting for a public hearing. And then once, once that's approved, we'll update the document to include those that adopted ordinance or regulation, I should say. Okay, any questions on that?
All right, and one other minor item, uh, you've changed the definition of medical clinics to make them a little more expansive recently. And so we need to update the zoning document to reflect that change. It's currently in effect, so you would refer to this uh, this definition as needed. Um, but we'll make that change at the same time we update the document with the cannabis regulations. Okay. All right, um, so coming out of our meeting last month, we reviewed the the feedback received. And I had some discussion with Clifton. And we've decided to table and and maybe maybe only for the time being pending additional work to be completed by the commission and the conversation we just had is relevant here. Because you as a commission, if you're willing to put in time to further consider some of these items, then then maybe they could be carried forward in some capacity. But as of now, we don't, uh, the items I'm going to review, we don't feel are are prepared to be advanced in any way. So let me, let me go through those one by one. The first item was our recommendation to combine the small commercial zones. And as we discussed last month, these zones really, they have a lot in common, but they're not the same. Uh, there are differences in height allowances, uh, air coverage, setbacks, frontages, et cetera. That would, if we were to merge them in any way, combine them, that would be impactful to the way properties are regulated. The the purpose of this was really to simplify the regs, uh, provide more standard regulations across commercial areas. These uh, these areas have a lot of commonalities, but they do have some differences. And because of that, an approach that just sought to merge them without a lot of study and further consideration uh, would, might be hasty in its approach. Um, additionally, we had a a recommendation to rename the Mystic Village, the D B five to Mystic Village, and there were concerns about confusion with that name and with Mystic Village rightly. And so we're, we're gonna walk away from that. Uh, there was no uh, other purpose to change a D B five other than to make it uh, just more intuitive as as a zone name. Uh, so I've said my piece. Does anyone have any questions or comments on tabling this?
This is Lynn. I completely agree with this suggestion.
Yep, this is Ryan. I agree with it as well.
Okay. What what I do want to place emphasis on and what we're we're about to get it, get into as we get into our agenda here is making the uses across these zones more consistent. Um, which is not to say we'll take an approach of just allowing whatever is allowed in any of the zones in all of the zones. But to be more targeted in uh, and allow more flexibility and a greater range of uses in each of these zones. And so it's our intention to walk you through that. And I think that's one means of achieving what we're trying to accomplish, which is to provide uh, more flexibility in the use of commercial zones for uses that would likely be beneficial to the surrounding residential area because they're convenient uses that may be desirable. And uh, just provide a little more flexibility and environment where uh, maintaining sustaining retail is can can be very challenging. Okay, any, any other questions or comments on this? All right, I'll move on and I've got just a a handful of these.
Sal has his hand raised.
Oh, Sal, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay, so we discussed C S five and how it applies in Parketuck and the main discussion was, you know, how uh, you know, as a zone in Parketuck, it didn't really work.
Yeah.
And uh, that is found near Route seventy-eight going up to Route forty-nine. Uh, so i- i- is there any discussion of changing that zone uh, to possibly L S five or uh, possibly having a different zone there?
Can you very briefly re- refresh my memory as to why this zone in your mind, this zone does not work there?
Uh, so th- there was significant discussion about how uh, that was a shopping center area.
Yeah.
And how it doesn't really fit in with what's what's there right now. Uh, there were s- you know, some significant limitations with the uses. Uh, and that's why, you know, uh, for for Parketuck, we were thinking that that C S five doesn't necessarily work there. Just like the the H I sixty doesn't work that well where that whole area behind Stop and Shop where Route forty-nine is. Uh, and we were looking, uh, uh, even in that area where uh, uh, across from Stop and Shop that possibly like uh, an expanded P V five or some other zone would work better. And that was part of the workshop also at the Stonethin High School.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that, you know, something is progressing in that form.
I I think we're go- we're going to address some of this this evening by talking about expanding uses and of what's allowed in some of these zones. So I think we'll partially address this issue, but not fully. And I I might consider putting this on the list of discussions or topic areas that require more discussion by the committee, by the commission, and maybe even a a meeting dedicated to exploring this. And in in order to further, uh, you know, fully understand what the issues are and what the possibilities are. Does does that make sense?
This is Ryan. I I think that would make sense.
Okay. All right, so let me move ahead to the T C eighty and H I sixty. So we had introduced the idea of combining these into one zone, not physically, of course, they're on separate sides of the town. But just creating a new zone that is applied to both of these districts in order to provide m- more flexibility in in both districts, but mostly the H I sixty, which is, and and we talked at length about how the zoning, it it really limits what's possible there and and much of what it was intended to support, i- it just isn't feasible in current conditions. Um, so like our similar discussion or recommendation, we we think we should not only table, probably just abandon the idea of combining these into a single zone and instead focus individually on each of these zones and changing the uses and and any other regulations as needed to make them more operable. Yeah, so Lisa, Ryan, uh, agreement on that? Okay, anyone else? All right.
This is Lynn. I agree as well.
Okay, thanks Lynn. Now, at Sal and this, at Sal rightly points out, there was a lot of discussion on the P V five and surrounding areas at both the workshop and uh, Sal brought this to our attention, uh, at last meeting or the meeting before. Uh, we talked about it very briefly last month. We, we have taken a look at many of the arterial corridors that coming out of the P V five. And they are primarily residential corridors with some institutional uses here and there, school, church, that sort of thing. Uh, but we don't think it's feasible or a good idea to expand the P V five along any of those arterial corridors, which is largely the R H ten and and some other districts surrounding the P V five. Um, you know, Sal, I I know you 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 see a lot of potential here. Um, do you want to react to that in any way?
Uh, well, I I wasn't actually i- initially discussing expanding P V five. Uh, I I brought it forward only because when I mentioned doing maybe an R H five and an R H five B, which is something we talked about ten years ago with uh, E D C commission with uh, Jason Vincent. You know, a- and we had worked on it significantly, uh, because we, uh, at the time, P V five had passed. You know, we wanted something to build upon, you know, uh, an area that's residential, but it's got a significant amount of commercial within it because it's on a state road. Uh, both on Route one, Route two and uh, Route twenty-seven. So, you know, I I I really think that even if we're not doing P V five, you know, we need to do something to to build up the P V five specifically in Parketuck. You know, a- along that corridor, because if we don't have some sort of uh, intermittent zone, uh, even if, you know, Jim Lathrow put out there, you know, maybe expanding the L S five zone uh, along that corridor would be a nice fit to butt up to uh, P V five. P V five, you know, a- along the base of uh, Route, Route two and Route one uh, is primarily residential.
Yes.
You know, a- and now it's been infilling a little bit with some business. But we're never gonna support, you know, having commercial on the first floor uh, in our downtown, okay? There's a lot of people that want to put residential there and mainly residential. Uh, or, you know, the the possibility of seven-foot building, seventy feet, seventy-foot buildings, which is higher than the Washington Trust in our neighboring uh, westerly Rhode Island. And, you know, that's never gonna become a reality, you know, we're never gonna get into, you know, the potential of P V five unless we have something that supports the the zone. Uh, a- and the other thing that I mentioned was, there's over a fifty-one percent non-conformity uh, in the zone because in the R H ten zone. Because beforehand, it was much less restrictive when it was the Parketuck Village Fire District Zone, and then it became R H ten. So anytime somebody is going forward, you know, to either change a zone or do something, you know, they encounter variances, they encounter special use permits, it is very restrictive in what you can do, you know, uh, and the number of residential that you can put in. You have a number of these large homes that you just can't do much with. Uh, without going through that very expensive and uh, untimely process, okay? Uh, a- and just picture having, you know, just a few other professional offices on Route one and Route two, you know, how much that's gonna help our downtown, you know, with uh, you know, people going uh, fre- frequenting, you know, restaurants and delis and every other place, you know, uh, to build up our economy. Uh, i- i- it's gonna be huge and, you know, we have everything already in place with high-speed internet. Uh, what do you call, uh, high-pressure gas lines, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, it is, i- i- you know, it is screaming, you know, uh, to to be some sort of uh, professional zone. Uh, so, you know, I I I'd really like to see some sort of recommendation from F H I as to what else we should be doing, you know, uh, between the P V five, going all the way down to Exit ninety-two and going from downtown Parketuck uh, up Route one, you know, to to build up that zone, you know, something that would work with residential as a buffer. Uh, and and that would permit, you know, additional residential. You know, the the big issue that we had when we were looking at it was, how do we take out, you know, this home occupation uh, uh, permit and and make it so that, you know, uh, professionals don't have to reside there, okay? Uh, w- we wanted to have businesses downstairs because we knew that, you know, they would be a great buffer and they would, you know, uh, uh, you know, they would be there max eight to six. And uh, you know, they would t- take care of the property. Uh, so that would be, you know, something positive to have near the residential.
This is Ryan. If I can, i- it sounds like this is something you've, you know, you've got a lot of lot of ideas and a lot of data on. I think it's something we probably deserve a more dedicated session to discuss perhaps. Um, if that's something Clifton and Francisco, you think might be useful downrange. I know we've got stuff we do want to cover tonight. So I don't think we're gonna cover this here, but it does sound like it's something worth discussing at a future meeting in detail.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Alessa.
I would say, I I think I agree. I think the whole Route, Route two corridor going from, you know, downtown all the way up to um, the H I zone practically should be looked at a little more carefully. Because like in there, there's like a C S five zone in there somewhere and
There's L S five also, uh, and it's intermittent with uh, the
Yeah.
R H ten. In addition, you know, there there has been a number of variances all within that.
Got in detail, I think.
Yes, yes, let's, let's put this off to another and one of those dedicated nights when we're looking at, you know, very specific in more detail, yes.
Okay, so we're, we're agreed on how to approach this then?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. We had, and and we really did not uh, spend much time at all uh, talking about this last last month because we we had a lot of other things that uh, consumed our agenda. Th- this is a concept that came out of our workshop and there are a lot of concern about scale of development. Uh, we put an idea out there in response to that about regulating development based upon size. And um, we received feedback from Clifton and and staff that was not favorable to this idea because of concern uh, about increase and a substantial increase in request of variances that it might result in. We, we had already introduced some controls on how uh, a site could be built out with respect to coverage. So we do have some controls on the density of development in in that capacity. Um, but we don't have any controls over the scale of development, other than the fact that a lot, in a lot of these small lot districts, the parcels are very small and things are built out. And multiple properties would have to be uh, acquired and developed to to make a large-scale development possible in the town. Uh, so for that reason, we've decided to table this idea. Uh, because it would likely just create more problems than it would solve, and I wonder if anyone has thoughts on that.
We aren't building sizes kind of determined by F A R anyway? Kind of?
Yeah, not if you had a big enough lot.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, part of it too, I mean, if you have a big enough lot, you're putting this in, then you have other things like parking and blah blah that takes it. But if you have a huge lot, yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. Sometimes parking dict- dictates the size of the building.
It's the biggest control, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I I agree with Clifton's perspective on that, and I don't want to create, you know, open up a can of worms unnecessarily
So we're saying, I just want to summarize, what I'm hearing is that we're satisfied with F A R and our current parking regulations um, in being able to limit the the size of a building um, without uh, other than height, of course, without any other, um, you know, parameters that outlined in the regulations. That's what we're, that's what we're saying.
Oh, that's what, what was not what I was saying at all. I said, in often times, parking is is the limiting factor. I'm not, but then I said, I think we we're talking about parking later because I have huge issues with parking. Um, and how we make people build huge parking lots for nothing. Um, that's a whole different thing. But yeah, that's what I was saying.
Okay, so so here, here's my point on that. If we were to change um, our parking regulations so that we're not requiring, you know, um, larger parking lots, then the, what we're saying, the limitations on the size of the building that is often currently dictated by the parking lot goes away and the building size can become larger. You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
So I just, you know, it kind of goes hand in hand. If we o- honestly think that the parking rate is is part of the formula, major factor in the part of the formula, major factor in the formula to say, well, this is how big a building can be, because if you have a building this side, you're going to need X, Y, Z amount of parking, and we change that to lower the amount of parking, it means your buildings can be larger on the same size lot.
Yeah, I, I wasn't saying that, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm, I'm, I know what you're saying, and I'm, I'm not sure I agree with, there's no way to limit this, and I would like to think about this a little bit.
Yeah.
Let me give me some more time to think about it.
What Francisco's suggesting is, at least for the time being at this point, we take this off the more active schedule, is that what I'm understanding, Francisco?
Yeah, well, I mean, Clifton, I, I, from Clifton's perspective and his staff, I, I think they'd be satisfied, we decided just to not revisit this, but um, at, at, at the very least, I think we should table this because it would be very impactful. And um, it hasn't yet been fully considered, all those potential impacts. Um, and I'm not sure we've got full support for this idea, for this approach. It, it is, it would be, we would be introducing a new type of standard to the town zoning regulations, you don't have, for the most part, you don't have any limits on development or building size across zones or across the town. Uh, so this would be a somewhat novel approach for your regulations.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I agree.
I understand what you're saying.
I don't think we need to, I don't think we should be in a position or put ourselves in the position of creating something brand new with really nothing behind it or no, you know, to, to Alyssa's point about a lot, a lot of things, not enough data to actually make an informed decision on this, so. I think it makes sense, especially with Clifton's perspective being taken into consideration to, to table this.
I think if we're going to talk about this, we need a lot more information, what, what it could potentially look like, examples, good, bad, ugly, everything, it would be a huge, like you said, a huge paradigm shift.
Very heavy lift.
It's a heavy li- it's a heavy lift, and with our timeline, you know, this is, this would be such a heavy lift for buy-in from everybody, I like the idea, I really do. Um, and I, I think that it, you know, I hate to say it, I think things sort of, our hands are tied a little bit with the timing of the contract and, and all that sort of stuff, and this would be easily a two-nighter. This discussion. Cause then this ties into the parking, it ties into so many other things. But I don't, I want to think about it a little bit, so I don't want it to be a hundred percent like, let's table it and come back to decide to veto it. Can we do that?
Well, I don't think we were looking to make any kind of votes and veto things, I think really, Francisco, again, I'll refer to you, but I think you were saying at this point in time, you wanted to take this sort of out of the active consideration phase, correct?
Right.
Well, I'm saying, let's not do that, let's just table, let's thought of it for now.
Right, we can just put it off to the side, correct, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, put it out, let's put it off to the side.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, one more, and this, this is a consideration that Clifton brought to us about permitting single-family residences by right in all zones. Uh, the only zones not currently permitted in are the M one, LI one thirty, HI sixty, and HM. And yeah, as we discussed last month, there's a lot of concern about the appropriateness of new single-family development and industrial zones. And there was some information shared with Clifton, which Clifton shared with us about the challenges to financing mortgages in industrial zones. Um, that was brought to our attention, that kind of complicates the picture. Um, so we, we think we should walk away from, and Clifton agrees that we should uh, abandon this recommendation.
This is a huge no for me. To not allow them.
Where did this recommendation come from?
Uh, Clifton introduced it, and it's something that he wanted to discuss with the, the commission, and Clifton, I don't know if you want to expand upon that?
Yeah, I ca- yeah, I can. Um, the real impetus for this not only is, you know, from the mortgaging standpoint, um, we, in these four zones that are listed, we have numerous single-family houses that are, have been developed, and then the zone has been placed upon those areas. Um, great example would be Tagwank and Tagwank Spur with the LI one thirty. Um, residences of those pre-existing single-family homes have run into issues with mortgages. And the zoning board of appeals has set precedent on, they will never permit a si- a variance for any project in these four zones uh, if it's related to a single family. So it's made those, you know, prior, you know, homes uh, that have been there prior to the existence of zoning almost inoperable, both from a mortgage and insurance standpoint, but also from a variance standpoint, since the CBA has kind of set that precedent, so. That's why I brought it forward, is because this is something we've dealt with um, on a case-by-case basis, thought it was worth the discussion. Um, mainly for the pre-existing stuff, but also just, you know, if you go to other states or other cities, single-family residential is a by-right use in those zones, so it is a precedent that's been set elsewhere, but just wanted to open the discussion. After conversation or the feedback I heard last time and conversation with Francisco separately, I think this is something just not worth discussing at that, this point. Potentially tabling, but altogether just removing and, you know, letting those individual property owners deal with it on their own.
Yeah, okay, thanks for that background, Clifton, I, I wasn't aware certainly of the, of the ZBA's um, you know, stand on that, so uh, I, I agree uh, with, with not going further with this.
Yeah, this is Ryan, I agree as well.
Sal does have his hindrances.
So, I'd just like to point out something for the record, now, you know, I, I understand ZBA's position and, you know, it's because, you know, the, the court wants, you know, the zoning board to actually do something as opposed to ZBA issuing a variance. Uh, so, you know, the only two, you know, ways that the, the property owners could go about, you know, this issue is either getting a rezone a- and moving, you know, to just have their particular lot rezoned, or to ask, you know, the, the municipality uh, through zoning to, to rezone that area. Uh, so, uh, I'm hoping that, you know, uh, at one point, even if it's not through this, that to either, you know, that area is rezoned unless, you know, there's a push by zoning to expand, you know, that, that area where it is residential, uh, even though they're, you know, uh, now commercial, uh, you know, uh, do they want those homes to go away? Or do you want them to, you know, become commercial, that's really what it comes down to?
I, I, this is Ryan, I'm still in favor of the, you know, not pursuing this at this point.
The, the obvious concern here is allowing additional, allowing new single-family development in these areas that you're trying to reserve for commercial or industrial uses.
That's exactly my concern, I don't want to see a subdivision coming into the HI sixty zone. Or any of them, I mean, not just not that one in particular, but I'm, I'm a hundred percent opposed to having single-family residences in any industrial zones as a rate.
Okay, so we're agreed to table this. All right, so that was the last of the items we were tabling, which brings us to the items that we are considering moving forward, you know, I've got six different items I'd like to review with you. Uh, you, you saw all of these to some extent last month, while, although we, we had to rush through a couple of them, just, just to get through it. So I think it's worth revisiting, and, and let's start with what I hope to be an easy one. Uh, I think we had some consensus on this recommendation. Uh, in the Alpha Avenue area, you've got three zones, the DB five, which um, is separate from the DB five in the Mystic area. And um, otherwise does not look like the, the typical DB five range of uses or density of uses. Looks a lot more like an LS five. And between the two, there's an existing LS five, between the two, you have town-owned properties that are zoned residential. Uh, so that, that new bold black outline would show what it looked like if we merged those all into an LS five, and I think, I think we had some agreement on this last month, so um, let's, it's our second chance to air it out, uh, so I'm receptive to any thoughts or questions on this.
This is Ryan, I remember this conversation, and I think it does make sense, I don't remember there being any major objections, but I'll refer to other folks if they have them, I think it made logical sense.
My, my only objection I had, but I think it's, it's kind of moot, is the RM twenty, you know, if it is, becomes a, a five zone, then it can be subdivided into a bunch of lots, but from what I know of that zone, that lot, it's, it's just swamp.
Yeah, I could see the water right there, and, and it's also town-owned, the town controls that property, which isn't to say, right, which isn't to say the town couldn't sell it, um, but it's not, it's not privately held.
The town owns the Como land, really? That's interesting.
There's a town. There's the Como land, and then there's town land, so it's, it's a combination.
Right, so it's not all town, because there's the highway.
It's not all town, but partial.
Yeah, okay, I was gonna say, like, I didn't realize the town, so I didn't realize the Como was town-owned. Um, my other sort of random question about that line is, does it follow property lines?
It, it does, it, it follows property lines and then a borough.
The borough is the southern line.
Oh, that's that dotted line, because then it just, I was just saying, if it doesn't, it cuts through the Como lot. Um, and I hate when pr- zone lines, so that, so that Como zone line?
The borough, yeah, that's the borough line, correct.
And that's it, and that, oh, because that's the zone line, but the property line might go into the borough as well. But that's what, that's the only thing we can control. So we can't make that a cleaner line.
No, no.
Right, because that's not us, okay, that was, that was my other question, it just like cuts through that parking lot, so there's an issue with zone lines cut through, cut through lots.
I, I agree.
That was my only concern with.
Yeah.
That was my only concern with that, is that it can be subdivided, it is owned by the, the Como, and who knows, but they'll probably be there forever, so. And it is very wet, I don't think they could actually subdivide it and get anything in there with that swamp.
So this is Lynn, is there, is there any um, boundary that makes one side of the street one zone and the other side of the street another zone? How you have these lines drawn?
Yeah, we're, for the most part, we're just following existing lines. Um, generally speaking, gen- and, and here, this is just for graphic purposes, this isn't our final uh, proposed boundaries. Generally speaking, the best practice is to follow the center line of a street of a right-of-way or a road. Um, and then once off of that, following parcel lines. Or some natural barrier, like, like a river or something to that effect.
Okay.
So the town property is the LS five zone?
Yeah, the LS five, so um, how does that? RM twenty is all the Como, LS five is all town property, and the DB five is all um, like the laundromat and things like that, yep.
Now, the laundromat is, oh, that's the soccer field, yeah. No, oh yeah, that's the other soccer field, yes, exactly, the laundromat and, and the Harps Accord factory, or whatever that is.
Yeah, yeah, but not like Zach's, because that's the other side of the road.
That's, yeah, that's under the viaduct, that's over there, that's right there.
Yeah, okay. The only thing I wanted to say is um, for this, how do we notify property owners? Do they get individually notified? Just a, it's a process question, Clifton, I don't, I don't know. So they would get individually notified before we put this out for town vote? Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
And well, so, not a, not a town vote, but a, a vote of, of the commission.
Correct.
At, at a public hearing.
Yeah, Lynn, when we do these, um, when we bring these to public hearing, any parcel that is proposed to be rezoned um, would get a specific letter basically as a property owner, and then the abutters uh, would also get a si- similar letter saying, this parcel is being rezoned into X. Um, and so we would do that the same way we di- we would do it for any zone change application that comes in.
Okay.
Um, that won't be completed until we actually start bringing this to public hearing.
Right, okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure, and I agree with this proposal, I just, I just.
When we get to that point, um, as Francisco and his team have developed the kind of write-ups on the recommendations, this would be inclusive of saying to, we would include something with that letter to say why we're doing this and how we got to this decision. Um, kind of like a mini memorandum. So that way, people aren't just checking their mailbox and instantly surprised, we can give them like a little forewarning of what we're doing and why and how. Um, but again, you know, this will come towards the June and after timeframe when we start bringing these to public hearing.
Right, okay, great, thank you, thank you, Clifton, for that explanation, and I, I do agree that this makes sense to me.
Okay, comfortable moving on?
Yep.
All right, very good. All right, so, I, I want to spend some time on this, because this is, it's one of the big recommendations, and there are two parts to this. One is to expand uses, which is to say, to allow more uses in each of your commercials and industrial zones. Uh, and at the same time, to reduce some of your permit requirements from a special use permit to a site plan application. So the way I'd like to proceed through this is to go through it zone by zone. We're going to go one zone at a time, we've got a set of recommendations specific to that zone. Uh, they're very targeted, they all fit on one page, so I think you'll be able to get your heads wrapped around it pretty quick. And we'll take it one zone at a time, all right? Okay. Uh, so first of all, I, I, just a little background, and you saw this chart last month, a little background on the current permit requirements. About two-thirds of the uses allowed in your commercial industrial zones require a special use permit. Uh, that's a, a very high standard. It, it's time-consuming process, it's a costly process for an applicant. Um, it's a lengthy process for you as a commission because of the public hearing requirement. And we're, we're not sure that the regulations need to be that restrictive of some of these uses. We, we feel a site plan application and the site plan requirements still provide the commission an opportunity for uh, review, and it's still a fairly high standard for an applicant to meet, and it may be sufficient for some of these uses. Uh, so let's, let's go through that one by one, starting with the DB five. Uh, within the DB five, you do not currently allow outdoor vendors or theaters. And so, because it's a commercial retail-type zone with other uses, and that, that's the purpose of the zone at the top of the screen. It's for built-up areas with public water and sanitary sewer, in order to provide a mixture of commercial residential urban density opportunities. Uh, so, there, there were only, th- this zone's fairly permissive, which means it allows a lot of uses. Uh, so there are only a couple that seem to us you should consider for also permitting, and that would be an outdoor vendor, and, and the most common expression of this that we see now is the food truck. And then uh, theaters, and while new movie theaters aren't necessarily opening up, there, there are much smaller venues uh, that uh, are thriving. So before I move on to changing some of the permit requirements, were there any thoughts on that?
This is Ryan, I think given the nature of what's already allowed there, kind of almost doesn't make sense that we wouldn't allow outdoor vendors and theaters there, so, I mean, it makes sense to me.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. Anyone else?
I, I have a comment.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
Well, I don't know if it's a comment or just a question about, you say outdoor vendors or food trucks. Food trucks I know open a whole can of worms with, you know, parking and, and are they, they, they're just a really big thing. And so when you say it's going to just be allowing it, then it would, a food truck, if they want to come in, can't they just park now? Do we not allow food trucks? What's, what's the rule for food trucks now in town, Clifton?
Food trucks need to be identified on a approved site plan. So you need to identify the location where, where it's going to park. If it's going to have an electrical or hookup, water hookup, lighting hookup. And if it's going to have specific or specialized outdoor seating locations. So we currently require it to be on a site plan. This would not change that. It's just means that those uses or those locations in the DB five could add a food truck. Again, you know, subject to being approved by the commission.
The food trucks can't just park on the street.
They cannot.
So what about the one that like goes down to the, the parking lots? They have site plans?
Either that or there hasn't been a zoning enforcement action against them.
Because they leave after an hour. Um, okay.
It's difficult because it's on wheels, but we don't consider it technically a structure, but the way that we've processed food trucks in the past have been through citing it on an approved site plan.
Oh, no, I know. I know. There, I understand they're on wheels. And I know other communities have had huge issues with food trucks. I just didn't know how we handle them.
But this isn't just food trucks. It's.
Well, I said, what other outdoor vendors?
Any outdoor vending, correct.
Somebody selling jewelry, somebody selling any, any, any kind of outdoor vendor. It's not just food trucks.
These are permanent outdoor vendors.
I'm sorry?
These are permanent outdoor vendors. I mean, if someone, don't we have some mechanism in our regulations from when I remember that if they can do like a, an application for a day? Or is that not, did we not have?
You have, you have. You do have, I'm not aware of one for a day, but you do have regulations surrounding outdoor vending and that there are some guardrails around it. There are some requirements and parameters to that.
But this is not the same as outdoor supply.
Yeah, at least if you're.
No, no, outdoor, like, yeah.
If you're asking for regarding a day, um, typically that's done as kind of an event permit done outside of zoning and that mainly goes through the police.
No, maybe I was thinking of like a, there was something and I think it was like, maybe I'm thinking of boat storages where they come up and they come in and like they get it for the summer. There is something, I forgot what we, it was. I don't remember. It was so long ago. It might've been taken out, Clifton. This was way before your time.
Currently.
I remember someone coming in like every year. Someone used to come in every year and ask for a permit for something. What?
We don't allow for the temporary, um, struck, the temporary to, you know, come in and out like a rolling approval that comes before the commission. Um, the only time that we've seen that and has been with the Mystic Seaport and they've just been slowly updating their um, master plan to relocate sites of covered boat storage. Um, other than that, the commission has in the past basically set the guardrails of when these uses can be operable. Um, and so they've set, you know, sunset clauses on, you can use it from this period to this period of the year. Um, but from that point, it becomes permanent as an approved site plan. So the commission can impose, say on a food truck or any outdoor vendor, it can operate between month to month. You know, you set the months and the stipulation. And then, but from that point, the food, the vendor itself can rotate. So if it's a jewelry store one weekend to a food truck the next weekend, um, unless there's a specific guardrail and what the approval of the commission set, um, those can rotate. So it's not like the commission's approving, say, a pizza truck only. It's approving a food truck only. So if the food truck itself.
It's approving outdoor vending.
And so these are usually specified in greater detail in the application. Um, but if somebody kept it vague and just said, we want to do an outdoor vendor, anything that constituted an outdoor vendor could theoretically go into that location.
And if we didn't like a single use, if we didn't like a single use, as we discussed, uh, we would have to come up with a reason in the reg that indicates you can't use that for a, a particular use. So in other words, maybe, maybe we don't want food trucks, but any other outdoor vendor is okay. Like I'm just using this as an example. We would have to state that as part of the regulation because otherwise by just saying outdoor vendor, somebody come, and we all said, we didn't want food trucks. We don't have a leg to stand on to say, no, we're, we only meant jewelry stores.
That, that's correct unless it was specified in the application. Yes.
Exactly. Right. And we just had something last month or two months ago where um, somebody wanted to do something and they said it was only going to be there for nine months and we tried to say, okay, you're, you're going to get this for nine months. And we couldn't do that. We couldn't put a statute of limitation on when, on how long it could be there. Uh, it was done. It was either approved or not approved. Am I correct, Clifton? We just did that.
That, that's also correct. So when the site plan gets signed and recorded, the location of the structure, you know, in the case of what you're referring to, um, basically becomes permanent until that site plan is updated. So the commission couldn't set a sunset clause because you don't have the capacity or authority to do that, to say the site plan is only valid from X point to X point. What you can do in the case of an outdoor vendor is say, this location, you know, this parking location is valid to be operated only between the months of X and X, but that runs with the course of the land. So that site plan has a stipulation on it for, you know, 10, 20 years from now. If it's never changed, that you can operate there only between, you know, May and October, right? So it does, it runs with the land, um, and it can't come back up.
And what is a legal justification for limiting the timeframe as your example, May to November? What, what would the commission have to, have to say in order to justify that limited time span?
The, the commission's done that for any sort of um, outdoor space already. So outdoor patio spaces, covered patio spaces, um, particularly for restaurants, the commission's done that. Um, the commission's also done it for event spacers or specifically out, outdoor event spaces where they've set the stipulation. It's just you can't set the sunset clause of saying, oh, this site plan is only valid until X date. You can't do that. You can say, these are the parameters or these are the months of the year with, when this use can operate. Um, Mystic Village has their special use permits approved for uh, events throughout the year, but there's specific identified events in the special use permit. That doesn't mean they could theoretically just do as many events as they want because that's not what's in their special use permit. But the same principle applies. It, it runs, it runs as long as a site plan or the special use permit is valid. Um, which is, you know, as long as it's recorded and not changed. But you can't say that the site plan is only good for one to two years. That's, we don't have those regulations. And I don't think that's supported by case law, but I'll refer to Francisco.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
So um, thanks for that. Um, so I, I feel, my personal opinion is that outdoor vending is a slippery slope that depending upon what it is actually, um, what, what the vendor is selling. Um, they is, is, makes a big difference. So, you know, a food truck, you know, leads to litter. It leads to, you know, uh, picnic tables, parking, um, you know, it's, it's not necessarily contained. Um, which is very different, you know, from, I don't know, a vendor that's selling, I don't, I don't know, pot holders. I don't know. Um, so I think that it's just a very broad category. Um, and I think we've got to think about it that way. If we just want to include it all inclusive or you want to kind of whittle it down a little bit.
Lynn, we could do something, say, if we allow the use that's currently not permitted, as Francisco's saying, we could say site plan application or special use permit, right? We don't have to just say by right. They can bring this and do this anytime. So it does give the commission the capacity to review and, you know, um, on, like, look at each one of those factors as they review the application. Um, this isn't, I don't think Francisco's intending for this permitted use to be a by right use. So the commission does still have the reins on controlling it.
Correct. We're, at this point, we're not making recommendations as to what the requirement would be, whether it would be a special use permit, site plan, a zoning permit. Uh, we're just wanting to introduce them for discussion and for consideration as an allowed use in some capacity.
You know, with that, with that explanation, Francisco, I think it makes sense. Um, you know, and then the next step would be obviously, you know, what kind of permitting or site plan, whatever. So that would give the commission some visibility and, you know, say.
Right. Exactly.
So I'm looking at where the DB five is. I'm, I'm right on the map so that I could, because I can never follow all the conversation without like looking at the map. And the DB five is, um, it's right, it's, it's right by uh, the, the river.
There's a couple of them, right?
Right.
No, well, there, there's two and we're talking about rezoning one of them uh, to an LS five, which leaves the DB five's an entirely, you know, Mystic area adjacent.
So where, but where Miss, like downtown Mystic, like along Route one?
This is a partial.
No, it's not.
This is a partial of Holmes Street and Cottrell Street. It's the intersection um, of those two roads with Route one before it goes over the bridge. Um, the only, you know, it's all of those associated buildings and structures with the realtors, the restaurants, all of that. Uh, the hotels, all of, all of those fit into that DB five location.
Yeah, I, I personally do not agree that an outdoor vendor should be in that area.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, now that I know where it is, yeah.
Yeah. I, yeah.
Okay. Let's strike that.
Theater, I mean, a theater is fine. I have no problem with theaters. Your second, um, your second suggestion, but uh, I don't, I don't believe outdoor vendors. Yeah.
Well, we're talking about the DB five zone. I'm okay with putting theaters in, but what is the, are there parking uh, waivers or what's the parking situation? I don't, we don't need a theater in downtown Mystic with the parking that's there now. And if, what's the parking for DB five? Can they, do they not have to have onsite parking?
They do.
They, they do for new. Yeah, they do for new.
They have to have onsite parking.
Correct.
Okay. So realistically, like, no one's going to come into.
Or a combination of a shared parking agreement.
They can do a shared parking agreement, but that's at our discretion. So I would put that in under a special use permit.
Yep. Hundred percent.
All right. So that would to- totally be a special use permit. Anything that may require shared parking because parking in downtown Mystic is really an issue. So all those things you have listed on the, on the next column, a hundred percent special use permit because of parking. In my mind.
So, so let, so let's talk about that. Um, I, I think we've exhausted the items on the left side of the page, correct? And I have some direction. No outdoor vending. Theaters, yes, but that, the segue to that is parking and permit requirements. All these uses listed here require a special use permit. Um, is that a standard that's really needed for a restaurant, laundromat, or any of these other uses listed here? Would, would a site plan not suffice?
What's the parking? Yeah. To me, it's about the parking. Do they, can they do a shared parking agreement under a site plan?
Yes.
They can. So what, what's the, what do they need? What's different between a site plan and a special use permit and a site to, like the, what is it? The type two site plan or whatever?
So a special use permit requires a site plan. Uh, a special use permit, the biggest difference is it requires a public hearing. There, there's also some additional requirements associated with reports and potential traffic studies that you can request that are tied to a special use permit. Both come before you for approval. Um, but the site plan application and approval does not require a public hearing and that's the big difference.
So here's the thing. I think given where DB five is, it just makes sense that things like a traffic study, um, you know, uh, et cetera are required. And if that, in order to do that, you need to have a special use permit, then that's, that's what has to happen because we're, we're really, we've got a, we've got a situation that affects both Groton and Stonington, not just Stonington. And it's all around that DB five area. And so I think that at least for the near future, until that resolves, we have to, we have to spend the time and the resources to make sure that we've considered absolutely everything and that the applicant has considered and, and is justifying their business appropriately and has considered every aspect. So, you know, I, I, and again, 10 years from now or hopefully less, this might make more sense, but until that parking situation in that area is resolved, I, I think it has to be a focus for the commission every time there's development.
So that holds true for all of these, all of these uses? Does that hold true for all these uses?
Does what hold true?
Lynn's, Lynn's concerns about traffic studies and parking impact. That's true of all of these uses?
I mean, my, my concern or my comment about taking these out of special use permit, we've had, if the, if you're saying the only difference is they have to have a public hearing, we've had public hearings that have lasted five, five minutes. But a public hearing allows the public to comment on the record. Site plans, it's at our discretion to let them comment, but, but public hearing gives them the right to comment.
I, I, and I, I did, I, I just want to correct that statement. I did not say it was the only difference. I, I said it was the principal difference.
Okay. Well, well, okay. But to me, that's one of the differences. That, to me, that's a major difference that.
It is.
We've had, we've had site plan, we've had special use permit, we've had public hearings that no one says anything and it, it almost looks like a site plan. And you're like, well, why are we doing a special use permit for this? Well, we have to, our public hearing. But then expand on some of the other reasons that, that would shift it over. I like giving the public an opportunity to speak and, and I'm not going to say anything about this chair, but I've, and I've worked with chairs who said, no, it's not a public hearing. You can't talk. And a public hearing allows people to talk no matter what. Not at the chairman's discretion.
So is the consensus that we don't touch this in the DB five?
Yes.
That's a consensus I'm hearing. I, I don't agree entirely, but I will go along with the consensus on that.
Well, I mean, the consensus, Ryan, is there's only two of us are saying that and there's, then there's you and I think Dave is on the call and he could.
I already, I said, I don't necessarily agree with some of the things stated, but I will go along with the consensus.
Okay.
So I mean, is that clear enough or?
Yeah, no, I'm just saying like, I wish, you know, there's, we could get more of a, something against you, Ryan, like that there was more of a consensus. Um, just, there's just a lot of, it's a tough night and a lot of commissioners aren't. Um, just, there's just a lot, it's a tough night and a lot of commissioners aren't on. That was, I didn't mean that in a bad way, I'm sorry. Yeah. I just wish that we could get a total consensus with the entire commission, cause it's, it's just like, you know. But, fine.
Well.
And that's just a consideration, and we're not making a decision tonight.
Exactly.
Maybe the other commissioners could weigh in.
Yes. Thank, thank you for saying that. We're, we're not voting tonight, we're not voting.
Right, so just, right, they can listen and say, this is what we talked about, and they can weigh in on their own, you know, and maybe, you know. Yeah, perfect.
Alright, and this is Dave, I, I'm on, this is my first meeting, so I was trying to be a little quiet, but. Um, I, I, I think your concerns about the public hearing, don't, don't the parking requirements? Aren't they part of the, the regs and? We just said that they would have.
Correct, the parking requirements don't change whether it's a special use permit or a site plan. I think, I think Elise's comments are regarding the public being able to speak. On the applications within the zone, and that, that's being the primary difference, yes.
Okay, let's move on to the next one, because I have several of these. And I think based upon our discussion on this one, we can move through the rest more quickly, because there are some, going to be some common themes here. The next zone is the CS five, where outdoor vending restaurants, retail restaurants. Mixed-use residential and wellness centers are not permitted. And I wonder if you have thoughts on permitting those types of uses in the CS five. And there's the purpose statement of the zone at the top. Small lot restricted business zone and built up areas that provide service to local residents for limited retail and service activities.
So the CS five, just to clarify, is commercial shopping?
Yes, yes, it is.
Right, so there's that, so a restaurant isn't shopping. I mean, the, the zone was intended for shopping, not for restaurant, I'm just, just pointing that out, not that I care.
Well, it says, it, the purpose statement says retail and service activities.
But that's where the CS comes from.
Food service.
Yeah, I would say restaurant is food service to me.
Yeah.
And, and a service activity would include a wellness center, perhaps, that seems like a service.
I'm just saying what the CS comes from, commercials, I like I said, I don't really, I'm ahead to, so where are the CS five zones? There's one up on.
They, they're, yeah, they, they are somewhat scattered.
They're really scattered around, right, there's one under one, right?
Yeah, yeah.
CS, the CS five and LS five zones, um, when we get to that. They're primarily distributed along the main arterial roads.
Yeah.
So, you know, I know Sal was speaking on this earlier regarding the CS five along Liberty Street and in Pocket Tuck.
Yeah, and I brought that up too, yeah.
CS five does split into, there's some in Old Mystic, there's some in Mystic, um, there's a lot, you know, scattered along Route one. Um, same thing with LS five, so that's kind of your primary locations are the main arterials.
Right.
I'll just, I'll just save the staff perspective on these is, um. Permit the uses, but then leave it to the discretion of the commission, whether it's a site plan or a special use permit. That's, that's how I'm gonna stand on all of these.
I think that makes sense.
What's a retail restaurant, Clifton?
A retail restaurant is like a coffee shop where you have, um, I think it's fewer than eight seats. I think it's eight.
Yeah.
Um, but basically, it's like a coffee shop. Intent is to go in and out and meet, like, pretty quickly and get food.
Oh, like that soup plate, that, like that soup restaurant, Mystic Soup Kitchen?
Yep.
Yeah, or, or a deli.
That's exactly what it is?
That's kind of the intent of it.
Store. Like the bagel store in Pocket Tuck.
Correct. Correct.
Right, they have three seats, but it's really like, you buy it and you take it out.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, I just needed an example of a retail restaurant.
Clifton, this is Lynn, can you? So again, I've got the map up, um, unfor- uh, off the website. In downtown Mystic. CS five is on what streets? It's, it's really very difficult to.
It's the small intersection where, um, you have, uh, Greenmanville, Dennison, Willow, and Miss, Miss Tuxit. It's that intersection where the light is.
So it's like we have Keith's, Keith's Appliances?
Correct, yep.
And the dentist.
It's just that location.
It's just that. Okay.
And then up in, um, Old Mystic, it's where the, uh, the mill property is. The old mill.
The old Mystic Mill?
Yep, and going up to where the post office is on the corner of twenty seven and Main Street, where you have the stop sign.
Yep, yep.
And then you, you have a couple of locations, just along, uh, Route one going, uh, eastbound. Across town, and then you have your other primary location.
Where eastbound, go, wait, go back to that eastbound on Route one, where, by, by, across from?
Let me see.
It's across from the, it's across from the old Stop and Shop.
It's, it's the, well, you have this cor- the, across from the Stop and Shop on Route two and Liberty Street.
No, the old, oh, I'm sorry, the old, the old Stop and Shop in Pocket Tuck, where Renegade is. Is there CS five up there? What is that? There's the antique store, Red's, Red's Breakfast Restaurant?
Um, no.
What's that zone?
That is a LS five.
LS five.
And that, the only portion along Route one is the, um, corner of, um, Route one and South Anguila. That, um. That business park.
The business park, the business park?
Correct, and then the other part of the CS five is what Sal was explaining earlier, which is the area that buffers the HI sixty. So those are the CS five.
Like what Sal's carpets is.
Correct.
And the liquor store.
LS five is gonna be way more dispersed, but the CS five is a little bit more limited.
I guess.
So what's the, I'm, I was gonna go back to the merging the, the zones, we talked about merging the three zones. Is that, would it make sense, and this is sort of going backwards. The LS, the CS five and the LS five, I mean, is there a way to combine some of them? What's the difference between the CS five and the LS five? Local shopping and commercial shopping, or whatever, community shopping.
There, there are marginal differences, we walked through, there are differences in the uses allowed, and we walked through, uh, a lot of those. Last month, and we compared the options of merging just the CS five and LS five. And if you refer back to the presentation, that should be available on the website. We have a bunch of tables showing where there was overlap and where there was differences between the two. They are very similar zones, but they allow somewhat different uses with some, somewhat different permit requirements. And while they are five thousand square foot lot zones, the setbacks are different. Um.
Yeah.
The FARs differ a little bit, the heights differ.
Hmm, yeah, I, I think, I think maybe we shouldn't go there right now.
No.
Yeah. I'd like to, I'd like to say, yeah, exactly. I, I feel as if the retail restaurant, the mixed-use residential and the wellness center. I'm absolutely fine with allowing those in the CS five district. I'm not sure about the restaurant or the outdoor vendor. I, I'm, uh, the outdoor vendor for the same reasons. Um, that we talked about before, and the restaurants, it's just that, um. I don't think any of those areas that we talked about. That have, uh, the, on the intersections, such as the one on Miss Tuxit Willow, uh, Route twenty seven there. You know, there, there are homes, uh, pretty, pretty close together all around that intersection. And, um. I, I mean, I know that there's a Chinese takeout there, but I don't really consider that like a huge restaurant. So I, I actually think the, the retail restaurant, the mixed-use residential. And the wellness center makes sense, um, but not the other two.
Um, I'm okay with the retail restaurant and the wellness center. I'm, I like to shy away from the residentials in these commercial zones, because I think people might try to. You know, oh, we're gonna build a house, and they just want the residential. I know we have issues with residential in town. I could go either way on that, I, I'm not a big fan of it, but if, I don't want to be the sticking point on that.
I agree with Lynn, I, I could, I think we can go forward with retail, mixed-use and wellness center, the other two.
Yeah, I could do that, yeah, like I said, I'm not gonna be a sticking point on the mixed use. If there's a house there and they want to throw something on the bottom, yeah, knock yourself out.
Yeah, and I think it is just on those intersections, it's not, it's not like the next house over. It's just the ones that border that intersection, if I'm correct. So on one side, you've got Keith's, on the other side, you've got a financial thing. On the other side, you've got some kind of a, a wellness, it used to be a dry cleaner. And then on the corner, it's actually a residential house.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and these, these zones generally do a but residential, so we need to be a little bit cognizant of that. These own, you know, the, the adjacent zones to all of these, I'm not.
Right.
Although the, the CS five on that corner does, it's very touristy, it's, it's so close to the seaport. Um, but anyway, yeah, I'm okay with that.
So let me just ask you one other question, if we did this. And it really speaks to the point that all of these places, um, are, are very, very close to residential. Established residential, older homes, um. You know, when we talk about signage and things like that, is there a way to say? Yeah, we'll allow these things, but you can't have a big lit up sign, or you can't, you know, you're not. The, so that, so that they, uh, the people living next to them. Um, you know, who have lived there for, forever, now don't have a neon sign in their side window. You know what I'm saying? So is there, is there something we can do to kind of tweak it? To protect, protect the residents a little bit on that?
That's in a couple of weeks, that's the next section under the landscaping, signage and parking.
Correct, correct, and, and yes, Lynn, to, to answer you affirmatively, yes. And to some extent, your sign regulations do provide some of those protections, but you can add protections. You can add requirement that for any property, uh, adjacent to a residential district or residential property. Uh, they have to do certain things with their sign to prevent the light from spilling over. Um, so yes, you can provide controls on that, absolutely.
And as well as we can add buffering and things like that.
Buffering requirements, absolutely.
Okay.
And that's in, that's in, that's in section four.
We're gonna tackle that altogether.
That's coming up next month.
Next month, and if you could just make a note to ma- make sure that we really go through. Um, the thought process in relation to the discussion we're having now. I, I'd appreciate it, just so that we don't miss it. So my understanding is we're going with the retail restaurant, mixed-use res- residential and wellness center. And we're leaving out outdoor vendor and restaurant, and I think everybody agrees with that, okay.
Yes, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Alright, back to our discussion about special use permit requirements. Are, are we, uh, still of the same mindset in this zone as we were?
Yes.
And the other one, in the DB five?
Yep.
Yeah, I think the rationale is the same for me.
It's a little less so for me, because parking is not so much of an issue, but yes, I still think they need a special use permit.
I'll agree to that.
Okay, let's move on. The LS five. Purpose statement, this is a small lot business zone for built up areas to provide a full range of services. So even though it is LS five, which is short for local shopping. It's intended to provide a full range of services, so it does allow for uses such as restaurants and retail restaurants. And everything else we just talked about. I'm, once again, the, the only use that is not allowed, that is allowed in some other. Commercial zones is outdoor vendor, and I wonder if it's any different in this zone.
Not really.
So I'm looking at where the LS five is, and I'm going to say no. Um, from my perspective, the outdoor vendor isn't allowed.
I'm gonna ask why, I'm just curious. Lynn, I think you said the outdoor vendor is not allowed, I, I, you were looking at the zone, I just wanted to know what, and looking at it, what he, what's determining to say no?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ryan, I didn't hear you. Um, so I don't know if you've got your map in front of you, but the out, the LS five is, I'm looking. Um, in more towards downtown Mystic. So it, across the street from like, Uwet Road, um, which has, uh, like, uh. That would have the, uh, Uwet has the, um. It's the in, uh, Uwet is near the intersection.
Mystic Market, it's where Mason's Island Road is, yeah.
Yeah, and then it goes down Intimistic. Um, Intimistic, and it's all along where. Um, if I'm looking at this right.
It's all along Route one, Lynn.
Yeah.
It comes up by me, it comes up by me, across from Renegade, like where the red breakfast plate, red, what's that, Red Thirty Six, Reds? Restaurant, there's antique store.
No, no, it goes the other, oh, well, yeah, there's some of that there. Yeah, I just feel, once again, I think that, you know, the outdoor vendors. Um, are, are tough sell, and I think it, it, uh, you know, it's, they're. Unless we say, you know, certain ones are okay and certain ones aren't, I'm not, I just feel like. They're right in the middle of where we've got housing, et cetera, and, you know. I think there's litter and it's a congested area, and I just personally, in the downtown Mystic area. I don't think we need that. Uh, and in the Pocket Tuck area, where we've got Reds and whatnot, I, I mean. It's a narrow stretch, I just. Yeah, I, I.
Okay, I'm fine with that, I just wanted to understand.
It's so vague and so, I don't know, ill, I, I don't know, I can't get my head around it, and I think that it brings up too many issues.
Yeah.
And too many potential problems. You know, we could permit, like Lynn said, a jewelry store, a vendor who wants to set up a tent, but then all of a sudden, oh no, now it's gonna be a food truck, or, you know. It, it's, it's too, it's too ambiguous for me to get my head around, to allow it anywhere.
I think we're convinced.
Where is it allowed, where is it allowed?
I think, no, we understand, I agree, I think we, let's not.
Where, where, what zones is it allowed in?
Uh, the commission recently approved it in the GC sixty, I'd have to look at the table.
Yeah, that was right across, didn't we approve that right across from, um, Flemings, I think.
Correct.
Oh, it was, um, at that, uh, and you approved it at, at, um, by the, oh God, how it's, where Frank's Grill was, right? By that hotel.
Color and all that, right across from Flemings.
Yeah.
From Flemings.
Yeah, Flemings, Flemings Steve on Route one.
Oh, but at the, um, at the, the dog, the.
Yeah, that hound, on the other side.
At the hound, and didn't you approve it also at, down in the. I'm just like, I thought it was TC eighty, but the one like right up by Jerry Brown Road where Frank's Grill used to be? No, they, they had some food truck issue in their parking lot.
No.
I don't recall approving anything of food truck wise in the old Frank's Grill.
They brought a food truck in and there's a lot of to do about it, but maybe it was just, uh, somehow they did something differently.
The new restaurant, um, behind Dog Watch Two. We approved outside vending.
And so what do they sell?
That new restaurant.
Go fish?
Yeah, they were allowed to have um outdoor vendors come in on one side of their parking lot.
Okay. But that went along with another site plan at a diff, at a, at his property?
Yeah, yes, definitely.
Okay, all right, okay. What were they bringing in, the food truck?
You know what? I can't remember. It was, that, that was a good year ago now.
Yeah. Okay, I'm just curious. All right, yeah, I, it just seems that it could open a potential huge can of worms.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Yeah, it's ambiguous. Okay, we're all in agreement.
Hey, let, let's talk again about the permit requirements. And is, is this the same concerns and rationale as the prior two zones? That you should maintain a special use permit requirement for all these uses?
Mm-hmm.
I'm gonna say yes.
I would say yes, again, because of the downtown Mystic area, um.
They're small lots.
With, yeah, parking's an issue.
Again, again, parking isn't something that gets changed based off of special use permit to site plan.
No, I understand that. I, I think, I mean, realistically in these zones, none of these things are gonna come in. But if they do, I would wanna see a special use permit. It's a, so for me, some of it's about the hearing and letting, allowing residents to talk about it.
Okay, let's move ahead then. All right, the GC sixty. Uh, so we're in much larger lot zone now, about an acre and a half. Intended to provide a full range of shopping opportunities for the town. Restaurants, while the purpose statement says shopping opportunities, restaurants are allowed. Uh, microbreweries, brew pubs are not. And if you allow a restaurant, is this business use any different? And uh, turn it over to you.
Yeah, I don't, I, I think it should be included in our restaurants, you know.
Put, put more microbreweries in town. We, we don't have enough. I'm all for that.
All right. And how about the permit requirements here? So now we're talking about a much larger lot zone, much larger area, not as intertwined into residential areas and village centers. Do we still have concerns about needing to have a special use permit for these uses? And not that I think you're gonna get a, a new billiard parlor or bowling alley anytime soon, but that that is one of the uses that uh, is, we do have. And, and if we get to it later, we'll talk about consolidating some of these uses. In which case, I would be inclined to call this indoor entertainment into larger basket of uses.
I really need to know at this point, since, since it's getting to me a little bit less clear in these bigger zones. More, more exact differences between a site plan and a special use permit besides the public hearing.
I, you know, it's, it's a little too much for us to get into right now. I, I could open up the regs and go through it, but that's gonna take time. I, what I would recommend is that after, after this meeting, as you all have time. You refer to the regulations that, the requirements of each are spelled out in the regulations. Uh, special use permit is, in addition to the, the public hearing requirement, it is a higher bar in terms of information that is requested of the applicant, of which you have the right to waive some of those requirements. But it not only includes a site plan, but additional reports and information is required of the applicant. Plus the public hearing. So it, it is a higher bar.
Um, yeah, to, to broad stroke it, um, at least it just cuz you're asking. You know, this is where the commission can request a traffic study. This is where the commission can request um, significant studies related to storm water management, related to erosion sedimentation control. Beyond just the requirements of a site plan. So if you wanted to get in depth on something or a topic based off its location, that's where you can do it for a special use permit. Um, but it really is locationally based.
I'm, I'm going to, from what I remember from the regulations. A type two site plan requires a drainage study. So that's required by site plan, not by special use permit, right? After over ten parking spaces or whatever it is.
And not a, not a, the, the study is where you can start.
But I think there, on this level. But you also, when you said, we can ask for it, they are required and we can waive them if we don't want them.
Yes.
Correct. Right, so it's, it's, that, that's a different thing. Saying that we can ask for it is not the same thing as saying it's required and they have to ask for a waiver. It's not the same.
Well, there, there are a couple of things that you can ask more.
Yes.
In depth, on, yes.
Yeah.
So. It, it is, it is listed in the regulations of what's required versus what you can ask more of.
Yeah. There's, there's more required under special u- use permit. They have to, unless then, or unless they ask for like a waiver of this plan, that plan, this, that, the other thing.
Correct.
I mean, I've done a lot of site plans in Stonington, so I, I do know the regulations a little bit. Um, in my years as a cons, as an engineering consultant.
Um, Tim, can I just ask, in GC sixty, are, are bars allowed?
Yes, because they fall under restaurant and then liquor licensing.
And they get a liquor permit.
Yeah, and that's done through the state.
So we don't differentiate between a restaurant and a bar, whether they serve liquor or not? That's a state thing. Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Think the consensus might be to leave as is, so we can move on.
Yeah, I think so. Well, but we are agreeing to add the microbrewery brew pub in there, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
We can move on. I'm gonna look at this a little bit more and maybe take some of those out, because as we're getting into bigger zones, things aren't so much of an issue.
Yeah, the TC eighty, uh, similar to the discussion we just had. Does, also does not allow microbreweries and brew pubs, even though it allows restaurants, does not allow mixed use residential.
So. I don't know. I would say no to mixed use residential. But so what is a brew pub? What is then like Jealous Monk count as just a restaurant? Cuz they don't brew, brew on premises?
Act, yeah, a, a brew pub, microbrewery, they brew on premises.
On premises, cuz I mean, Jealous Monk does have their own.
Yeah.
They brew elsewhere.
Yeah. And a brew pub serves food, has a, has a restaurant function, a microbrewery uh just brews and serves the beer.
You know, it's just one of the differences because, um, like I said, Jealous Monk has their own beer, but they don't, I don't, they don't brew it there.
Yeah, it's just a restaurant, then I suppose.
It's just a restaurant, so that just counts as a restaurant that serves beer. Um, like I said, I, I tend to, in those big commercial zones, I tend to shy away from, from residential. Um, microbrewery, I'm all for putting that anywhere you can put it. I think it's a good industry and it, it draws a lot of people into town. And some, you know, startup, startup industries and people love them.
The, the only thing I'll add to this conversation beyond the HI sixty. The TC eighty is where I get the most requests from potential existing property owners or potential future developers to incorporate mixed use residential. So these are the two zones I get the most calls about. Um, so I'll leave that where it is and I'll leave that to the commission. But almost weekly, I get a call from existing property owner or uh, developer saying, can we put mixed use residential in this location?
Earlier tonight, we talked a lot about the TC eighty and the HI sixty. I would like to table this page till we have a focus meeting on those two zones.
And Cliff, and this, this is Dave. This is only the one area right at the, right on uh twenty seven and Jerry Brown Road?
Correct. TC eighty is exit ninety, HI sixty is exit ninety-two.
Yep. Not sure it's the best place for residential, well.
Um, this is Lynn. I'm okay with the brew pub, but not the mixed residential.
This is Ryan. I'm okay with the brew pub, microbrewery. I think, I, I still think there might be a viable argument for mixed use residential. But I think we probably need a little more time to think about that and what that looks like. Um, so I'm okay with putting the microbrew pub in and holding out currently the mixed use residential.
And then.
This is one of those key zones in our town, this in the, in the HI sixty, and we're gonna have a night devoted to this. With the entire commission, I would wanna weigh in on these, on this one.
And I, I take it you would wanna defer any discussion about the permit requirements to that meeting or discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just me.
All right, let's move on then. But I, I think we can proceed at the very least with the microbrewery brew pub recommendation. Is that correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Yep.
All right, if there's, if there's something we can all agree on, um, okay. MC eighty, that, that's your, your marine commercial zone of all water dependent uses. Interestingly, you allow retail in this zone. But boat part sales are identified as a specific use in your zoning regs. And it's not clear that they would be allowed in the MC eighty, even though retail is allowed because they are a, a specified use in.
Isn't that funny?
Elsewhere, yeah.
No more, no boat parts in a marine zone.
Yeah, that seems illogical to me. I don't know.
So where is the MC, where's the MC eighty?
It, there's a few zones and that's where your, your marinas are. Your yacht, yacht clubs and marinas.
So like downtown, um, River Road, downtown?
Yeah, yeah. In some cases, they're one parcel zones.
Correct.
So it's really just where the marina, so like downtown Mystic?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that uh boat parts is a no brainer. That kinda makes sense. That, that is water dependent, uh, commercial water dependent use. I see no reason for a microbrewery or brew pub. Nor do I see a reason for a retail restaurant. Neither are water dependent uses, so no.
You, you do allow, you do, you do allow restaurants in this zone. Right, at, because some of the yacht clubs and marinas.
Yeah.
Exactly. To support the marinas.
Yeah, and I would actually think a retail restaurant would even be a better thing than a large restaurant. You know, it's more takeout, would be more keeping with.
Okay, but you know what? When you do that, you take business away from the other restaurants. None of these marinas are hanging out by themselves. They're, they're close to, to other, other commercial areas. And people go in and they, they, they go to those areas. I mean, I personally, uh, the fact that it's part of a yacht club and it's, you know, a restaurant within the yacht club. I think that's, that's very different from a stand in, a standalone restaurant. So, and I, I don't think brew brewery, brew, uh, microbreweries and brew pubs should actually uh, which is focused on drinking, should have anything to do with a water dependent activity. Um, so, so no, I would say absolutely not.
It's the water dependent that gets me.
I, I would think the boat part sales, I think we all agree on. I think a retail restaurant makes sense.
I don't. And I take a mic. So are you talking about like Kitchen Little? Is that an example of this zone?
I'm looking at it. I, I think Kitchen Little is in the map, which I'm not the best at looking at. But I believe that Kitchen Little is part, it, it was not part of the, the zone. I think the marina is.
You know, and the line goes around it? Oh, that's funny.
I kinda think so, yeah. Based on the, based on how I'm seeing the map.
But I'm thinking the same thing. A restaurant that goes with a marina, like the Westerly Yacht Club has a restaurant and Kitchen Little, by all intents and purposes, next to a marina. I'm fine with that. But microbreweries, retail, there's enough places in town where we allow it. We don't need to water down these other zones with added uses. But boat, boat part sales is, that was crazy, of course.
Sure.
Yeah, and it, and it's not that they're excluded. It's just that, it, this zone allows retail, but it doesn't specifically say that boat part sales are allowed. And boat part sales are identified as a separate use that's allowed. I think it's in the Heritage Mill District. So once you identify a separate use and you say this type of use is allowed here. It implies that it's not allowed in other places.
So maybe we look at that, like does boat part sales need to be its own use?
Well, that's a broader conversation. I'm hoping, I'm hoping we could have, yes, yes.
Hoping we could avoid, but yeah, I mean, that's, we'll get into that.
No, have, I'm hoping we could have it, yes.
Yeah.
Right. But it would need examples. When we have those kinds of conversations, for me, I need examples of what would be a po- boat part sale that we may not want in a, a normal shopping district. Is there anything? Is it like a, an engine or a, I don't, I don't know. Like, I need some examples of what.
So.
You know, so the worst case scenario, like this is a store that's selling.
Engines at a store.
I don't know, like I'm just saying, like, when it says boat parts, clearly when they wrote this, there's some, some boat parts that they were thinking about, that someone was saying, I don't want them selling that by me.
Oh, I, example, an example might be, cuz I see this a lot, um, down in the Maryland area. They have, um, stores that have, you know, uh, trailers, like boat trailers. Just lining up. Think of it as a car lot. And it's just trailers.
Yeah, that.
Maybe that's a boat part. I don't know.
No, those, those aren't.
But I'm just saying, when we have this.
Okay.
Francisco, just to get you ready for what I'm gonna be looking for, when you bring that up. You know, examples of what would be the worst case scenario for a boat part?
Yeah, well, I, I don't see any worst case scenarios. So if you can provide me with an example, I'm, I'm happy to hear it. But I think this is fairly, but I think this is a fairly benign use, right? I, I think it was, my theory is that it was intended to be allowed in the zone because retail is allowed and it was intended to be allowed as a retail use. And what happened was, it was specifically allowed in the, I think it's the Heritage Mill District. Because there was a potent, there was a potential use that wanted to be accommodated and they created a little carve out just for that use or business. And in so doing, when you create that carve out, what you do is you imply that that particular use is not allowed as a, otherwise as a retail use. So I, I think that's the issue here. And that's what I wanna bring attention to.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, commonly referred to like as an artifact of a previous zone.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so on this one, we've all agreed that both part, both parts are in. But microbrewery and retail restaurant are out. That's what we, I think the.
I think we're, I think we're agreed. I think we're agreed.
Yeah, I'll agree to that.
So Francisco and Ryan, I know it's nine PM. I know we've already been delayed at a couple meetings because these conversations have taken longer. Um, what is the recommendation for moving forward with the rest of the recommendations? I know we have a couple more slides.
How much, how many more slides?
I can keep going. I defer to, I defer to you all.
How many more slides?
Several.
Sorry?
Yeah, we have.
Several being how many more slides?
At, at, at minimum, a half hour's worth of work to do.
Oh, see, and this is where I start, when, going back to our initial conversation. I don't wanna feel rushed. I don't wanna be like, oh my God, I'm exhausted. I just wanna get through this. I said we scheduled another night to finish these.
Well, let's, let, let me propose this. Let's get through this part of it. Uh, because we only have a few more zones to get through. And then we have different, then we have different sets of recommendations following that, that, that we could. You know.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's get through this, this group.
We will distribute this presentation that will afford you an opportunity to study those recommendations. And we can potentially at our next meeting move through them, uh, more expeditiously.
Yeah, Francisco and Brian, I was just, I was just gonna add that, what I'd like to do is, you know, finish up the item two with the uses tonight. Oh, I'll distribute the rest of the slide deck, and I think it's imperative that commissioners do the homework and review. And then I would suggest even pose me the questions personally and I'll relay them to Francisco. On what you have regarding everything else, and we can come into the next meeting kind of a little bit more prepared or ready to discuss and dissect.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Lot of, lot of thinking on the fly tonight, so I think it would be best if we come in with our questions and do our homework.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay, good, agreed, let's, let's plow ahead. The M one zone is a manufacturing zone, and the purpose is to provide a range of manufacturing and commercial uses. The following uses are not currently permitted, distillery, indoor boat storage, you do allow bulk storage in this zone. Uh, outdoor vendor or a self-storage facility.
I think when I, this is Ryan, when I'm looking at it, okay, if we allow brewery, it looks like we wouldn't allow distillery. Indoor boat storage, you have bulk storage, you're putting boats indoors, I don't see a problem with that. I know we already have concerns with outdoor vendors, so might be, you know, I'd keep that out. Self-storage facility makes sense if we're allowing bulk storage, comes to where we wouldn't allow self-storage facility.
So, um. We've got this one little area on, um, that's M one, M one is kinda funny. So we've got the M one that really is just, um, Zachary's. Right at the head of Lord's Point, which, um, borders on the Cove. Um, then you've got, as you, as you go down, uh, to Elm Street and then more into the borough. And it, I, I don't believe it's the Velvet Mill, I really don't think it's the Velvet Mill, um, you've got a little teeny twine. Oh, it is the Velvet Mill, okay, thank you, I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure. So the problem with, with this is that, um, I'm just going up Route one, so I make sure I've got everything.
It's like the, 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 the industrial park?
Up Davis Standard.
Davis Standard, it's not called, whatever it's called, what's that called?
Extrusion Drive.
Park in there, Extrusion Drive. Um, HTP across the street should, it's probably M one, is that right?
Correct.
What's the one that's right before, um, uh, uh? You, uh, the industrial drive or enterprise drive, the one right before it's on South and Willa Road, what's that, M one?
Oh, that's, is that like? Yeah, there's like this, where Seal Plumbing is, like in there?
Yeah, correct.
Oh, that's all M one?
There's like that little industrial park, there's like a, there's a bunch of stuff in, there's like, there used to be a pool place.
Yeah, yeah.
In there? That's M one?
Yeah.
Wow.
And then what is M one in downtown Mystic?
The Packer Building. And then all of Maritime Drive up near Old Mystic Village.
Yeah, that, that part back there, where DeSanto used to be.
Yep, the Acme, um, across from the train tracks, and then the couple existing businesses on Broadway Ave Extension.
Yeah, there's a couple down there, right? Right. So I'm gonna say yes to distillery, cause in my mind, that is manufacturing. Um. The storages, where do we allow self-storage, how, in town?
HI sixty, I believe.
Mm-hmm, so there is a self-storage place on Extrusion Drive, how did that get in?
I think that's an artifact from previous regulations. It's pretty new.
Okay, so there's that, so the only self-storage is the one like on White Walker, White Rock Road?
I believe so.
Is that us or the Westerly, that's before the bridge, right?
It's before.
Yes, that's us. I'm actually, I'm a kind of, of, I like self-storage, I, I think that it has such a little drain on. On, on resources in town, and, you know, I don't know, I'm, I'm. They just come in where nothing is, I, I don't like them, and you have to be really careful on how we define them and the regulations surrounding them with buffering and lighting and. All that sort of stuff, outdoor vendors, no, indoor boat storage. I mean, I, I can't say you can differentiate indoor boat storage by self-storage, like they could put a boat in their self-storage unit.
Yeah. Or bulk storage for that matter.
That's a you discussion, what?
Or bulk storage, which if you see on the right, bulk storage is permitted in this zone.
But so that's, that goes back to the discussion we just had about like talking about uses, right, like how were, how was a, you know, what's an indoor boat storage versus us, uh?
Yeah, and it doesn't make sense to me if we allow boat fabrication and we don't allow indoor boat storage.
There, but I don't, honestly, don't not understand the difference between indoor boat storage and storage.
Indoor boat storage is usually a taller structure.
Limited by height?
Yeah, cor- correct, but if you wanted to, if you wanted an actual comparison between a self-storage facility and a boat storage facility. It's gonna be taller, it's gonna look the exact same on the outside, it's gonna just be a little bit taller.
Pretty tall, I just, I've seen some pretty tall self-storage facilities, I, I just. Uh, when I was working, I designed a four-story self-storage building, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm going to correct you on that one, Clifton.
Maybe in that particular instance.
Yeah, I mean, there's single, singular, the, the existing mill buildings to serve self-storage. But if you took a self-storage as a day-to-day and versus an indoor boat storage, they're gonna, that's gonna be your primary difference.
Yeah, but I'm not seeing really in my mind a difference between those two things, it's limited by the zoning regulations, the bulk regulations in terms of height.
Yes, yes.
So, you know. If you look at like the, you know, so, outdoor vending, no.
What is the height regulation in M one?
Because, is it thirty-five feet?
I think it's thirty or thirty to forty, somewhere in there.
Yeah.
Gotta be three, it's at least three stories.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, uh, from my perspective, a distillery makes sense, um, I, I honestly am. And I'm really, it's, I, I don't think the self-storage facility, we, we have. That's allowed in another zone, I, I just don't think we need that, and also, um, that M one. Uh, where Zachary is, that would be, uh, a tough, tough sell. For that neighborhood to have, um, any kind of self-storage type. Facility there, so, um, and outdoor vendor, no. So I think, you know. I'm, I'm gonna say distillery makes sense, I mean, I don't, you know, but I, I can't see the self-storage of the outdoor. Yeah.
Okay, this Ryan, I, I mean, I can see self-storage, but in the interest, you know, but, you know, kind of. Moving forward, uh, I think we just stick down this distillery and indoor boat storage at one end, you're gonna keep outdoor vendor and self-storage facility out. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's fine, let's move on.
Okay.
Okay. And are, we have consistent perspective on the changing of the permit requirements that we wanna hold the line on all of these?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, I think we have three more zones to go, so. Here it is, LI one thirty, light industrial one thirty, the zone permits research and development office parks. It allows less intense use, having less impact on the environment and surrounding neighborhoods. A less intense and less impact than what, I'm not sure, um. The purpose statement perhaps needs a little bit of work, but use is not allowed in this area, conference center, hotel, medical clinic.
Let's see, the LI one thirty, so that's by like Tagwong Spur going up. There, right, and then there's like Dunkley is LI one thirty.
And that's the only location.
And, and then Tagwong Spur.
Correct.
All, all down that area.
North of exit ninety-one.
Yeah. Uh, this is one of those ones, I'm, I'm gonna pass on this one right now, I wanna think about, this is one of those big zones. Um, abutting the highway, this was one of those identified zones that night. And we can talk about it tonight, but I'd want this to be a, a bigger discussion, do we want a conference center there? I, we need to look at setback, I, I wanna, I, I want more on this one.
Okay, any other thoughts on this?
No, I think we can move on then, yeah.
I just, yeah, but I, I will just say that I don't see how, um. Having a hotel, less intense, less intense use. Having less impact on environment and surrounding neighborhoods, I just don't see how that fits into a hotel. A hotel is pretty intense use. Pretty intense use, and, and same with the conference center, light pollution, uh, traffic. Um, yeah, I, I don't see, I, I, I just don't see how either one of these. Fit into, into the purpose of the zone. But I'm, I'm happy to have a further discussion on it.
No, my discussion, I should've, I should've clarified that a little bit more, Lynn, my discussion is. That area around that exit, that zoned LI one thirty, do we wanna look at that, the zone there, is that zone appropriate? For that area, not really so much the uses, I was going, I should've been clearer, like, in, in that, I wanna hold off on these in the, in the LI one thirty zone. But I know that zone at that interchange has been discussed a lot, when I was on the commission, twenty years ago, we talked about it. Um, Tagwong Spur, do we wanna look at that zone as a whole versus the uses? So to tie that into a bigger discussion about that, that whole interchange at that exit.
Got it.
And going nor, going north of, of ninety-five up that road, so I meant it more that way.
Okay.
Okay.
Cause I, I think that is the only spot though.
Yeah, so let's move on, let's hold off on this one, take.
Yeah.
Okay, yep.
Let's move forward. The HI sixty.
You know my feelings on this one, I don't wanna talk about this one right now.
Alright. Shall we move forward?
Let other people say, let other people talk, I'm just saying.
I had to, I had to look at the, I had to read it, I'm sorry.
So, some of the discussions we had early on and, and even at the workshop involved. A lot of thoughts and concerns that the, the aims of this zone, what it was really aspiring for. Uh, have not, and will not come to fruition because that's just not the environment we're in anymore, it's not the market we're in. We're not gonna have big box retail development. Um, and so this zone to remain relevant needs to be more flexible, otherwise the property is likely to continue to sit the way it is. You're gonna get the one-off little franchise, fast food type gas station development. So the interest seemed to be to expand the range of uses permitted here. Leveraging its access to the highway, even though I realize there's some clearance and underpass issues. Uh, but with the emphasis on expanding the uses allowed. That's the context.
No, I shouldn't have been so, so quick on my comment, my comment goes back to the same thing I said with the LI one thirty. I think this is a bigger discussion, because looking at the things that are allowed with the special use permit on your right side. I don't think a daycare center is appropriate in that zone, we wanna foster other more commercial things. Maybe we need to look at setbacks, we need to look at a whole bunch of other stuff, so I'm not saying I don't agree with moving these things from the left to the right. I'm saying, let's look at this in the context of the entire zone with setbacks, HFAR, all that sort of stuff. Um, even, maybe even lot size, who knows what we're gonna look at, and, and so things like that. So maybe this is just jumping the gun, saying, you know, are we gonna allow these without looking at, um, everything else that's going on in that zone? That's all I meant.
At least, and for everyone's benefit, the way the, and I, I completely one hundred percent understand the, you know, you need to think of, of it in totality. The way we structured this was really to focus on the uses as one part, and then the setbacks and everything as another. And I guess my question for you and then for the commission is, is the use itself. If the use itself is so adverse to the community or the neighborhood around it. Then the, the setback or the buffer shouldn't matter.
Um, but I know, but you know what I'm saying, I, I think that it's a, it's a holistic.
Either it's, either it works in this location, or it doesn't, and then we, we massage it. To the exist, to the surrounding zones with buffers and setbacks. But it's, it really, uses should be considered as an either or not, if then. Um, and I really think we should focus on it from that frame of reference rather than as an if then statement.
In my mind, I need to look at this more holistically, and I, it's hard for me to say, to do, I understand what you're saying, Clifton, I totally do, and I could say, of this list, I could say, yeah, like. You know our feelings about outdoor vending, we've been pretty clear on that, um. You know.
Couple are.
If you want me to do it that way, I can do it, assembly, assembly. In this, no brewery, shore, compounding or fabrication, no, distillery, yes, hospital. Hmm, that's different than wellness center clinic, no, microbrewery, yes, outdoor vending. No, recreational facility, assuming that's like an indoor facility, or could that be like a tennis court or something?
And it could be indoor or outdoor, yeah.
No.
And we do have some high-density housing going there now, so.
We do, yeah.
I know there's a gym going in there now, but they could use some services.
And also pickleball courts, but.
Yeah.
And I'm just saying, I just ran down the list and told you my, what I would say okay and what I would say no to.
I do wanna call attention to the purpose statement, which identifies light industrial development. And, and maybe, at least it's to your point, that this whole thing needs to be revisited. You know, is, is assembly not compatible with light industrial development or compounding and fabrication for that matter?
I think that, that might be an artifact of, or I don't know, I mean, assembly, what, what is assembly?
There, there's some overlap in these terms, and that's also part of.
Like assembling things, I was thinking it was assembling people, is it assembling things?
Amble thing.
Yeah, no, not assembly, not like church, no.
I was thinking it was like an assembly hall.
It's, it's assembling, uh, assembling objects from parts, and so there's a lot.
It was assembling people.
Yeah, yeah.
I was thinking like the movie theater, the, I don't know what I was thinking, okay, then yes, I'm.
I could, I could see that, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm okay with this, uh. I was thinking more like, you know, the constitution, the right to assemble.
Yeah. Okay.
My bad, I'm sorry.
So I, I think we're at the point where there's a lot more work you wanna do on this. There's a few threads here that maybe we could move forward with, I can take that into consideration along with all the other guidance that you've given us. And then potentially come back with a recommendation, and we've agreed to leave the permits alone. Uh, the last two, and I'll try to move these, through these really quickly, but it would be beneficial if we could get all the way through this, this part of the work. Is the HM, uh, that's your, uh, historic mill or heritage mill zone. And the, this, I highlighted the blue wording because it, it's really excessive for a permit statement, it gets into the actual kind of regulatory requirements. So I, I think that should come out of the purpose statement. Uh, but it's intended for, uh, allow for a range of uses in historic mill buildings. Um, mostly with. Um, uh, mostly with. No, no.
It's a real zone, okay.
Yeah. Um, it's mostly intended to allow for the, the interior reuse of those buildings. Uh, so it's not really intended to encourage new development outside, but allow for reuse of existing buildings. And it, it does not allow for uses such as con- uh, community center, conference center, theater, wellness center.
Yeah, and reading, kind of with, just thinking of mill buildings, community center would actually be a very good useful mill buildings. Conference center, I think so. Theater, yeah. Even wellness center, I don't understand whether it wouldn't be allowed.
Okay with all those, and that, these are buildings that already. Where, where's the HM zone?
Looks like it's just in Pocketuck, just on the, along the river there. Along the river. I, I think there are two. There's one south of Pocketuck and one immediately north. And they're very small. They're on, I, they're like one, one parcel zones.
Now, what about, um, adding to that list, the arts, like an art center?
Art center, we don't have a specific, yeah, we don't have a specific defined use as an art center. I think that would likely fall under community center.
Would museum fall under community center?
The museum, I think we've fall under institutional use.
Okay. It's just that the old building.
Definitions.
Yeah.
That, that's the best way to handle that, right? Look, add that to a definition like somewhere?
Yes, yeah, to expand a definition to, to include.
Include art center or something, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with those.
I am as well.
Yep, me too.
Good. All right, we're almost there. PV five. And I believe this is our last zone.
PV five is just right next to the.
Pocketuck Village.
Anton Pocketuck. It's Anton Pocketuck, going up a little bit into route, up Route two.
Okay.
Like Dairy Queen.
Purpose statement. Mix, this is probably your densest zone. It's got the absolute minimum with respect to lot requirements and that. Five thousand square foot lots and minimal setback requirements, reduced parking requirements, uh, in the overlay zone part of it. Uh, so this is intended for fairly dense village scale development. Um.
Yeah, I think everything there is a site plan.
Yeah, yeah, it allows for a very wide range of uses, and the only special use permit requirements that jumped out to us. Were laundromat and micro brew pub, a micro brewery brew pub, which are permitted. Restaurants are permitted by site plan. Uh, so our thought process was that micro brewery brew pub should be, uh, permitted and the like.
Um, I would hate to go the other way, but maybe we should look at going the other way for some of those things, but, um. Let me think about that. I mean, I guess, I mean, by, by your reasoning, yes, if a restaurant is permitted by site plan, it's ridiculous to say a micro brewery is not. But because I would go back to the same thing with the DB five, I would move more things to site plan because parking in that, if parking in that district is a nightmare. And, I mean, I know that, I know what you said before, but, you know, listening to the neighbors. People, the neighbors in Pocketuck are very vocal on what's going on down there and having to have those public hearings.
Okay. About laundromat, what, what, what's the big concern about line? They, uh, they perform a fairly essential service, particularly in denser residential areas.
It's a bizarre thing. I don't really care about the laundromat.
With residents, a lot of, you know, a lot of apartments in older buildings that don't have facilities.
I think, does that, I think, do laundromats and dry cleaners, were they, um, kinda considered the same because of, and I think then the concern is pollution? Chemicals?
You know, Lynn, you could be, you could be right about that. Um, our definition of laundromat is not inclusive of dry cleaners, but that, it, that likely has its origins in that.
Could be.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the only thing I can think of because other than that, I mean, all these places have public water, so, you know.
Yeah.
I see no.
Right.
The, yeah, there's, nowadays, there's no air pollution. There would only be water pollution, and if you have public water sewer, you're, you're required that, um. All those separators to be built in as a requirement of building code.
Yeah, and nowadays, you know, lot, even dry cleaners don't do it on premises anymore. They ship it out.
Yeah.
I think, I think it'd be okay to go to site plans in my mind.
I mean, just because normally I would say no. Um, but because restaurants and everything else is included, like I said, I may wanna relook at this way down the line to move other things back to a special permit. I don't know if we can do that. But right now, like, let's keep it consistent, cause I don't consider those that different.
I'm okay with that logic. I'm okay with that logic.
Okay, very good. Um, we got through it. And so I, I'm not gonna get into any of this. It's there for you. Uh, I'll, I'll just walk you through what we have to orient you, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna discuss or make any decisions.
Can I make one, one quick comment? And maybe I'm, I'm missing things and I'm not on all the emails, cause I am kind of relatively new. I don't get these slides before the meeting. And if I could get them, you know, the week before, so I could have things, to me, like, looking at this tonight, it's a hundred percent brand new. And if I could get them like we do for meetings, do, do, do other people get them beforehand?
No.
No, we, we have not been distributing beforehand, uh.
I think it would really, you know, we're talking about like running through these slides. If we have time to remove them, then we might have thoughts in our heads. Before we get to this point, which might help our, our conversations.
We can do that. Our, our approach. Had been kind of the other way around. We introduce you to the content and then provide you with the content to take home and study further. And then we come back to it at the next meeting, but I, I understand the interest in having the material ahead of time, and we could certainly do that.
I might be the only one if no one else wants them.
I, yeah, I would like them in, I just think it, it will help advan- even just being prepared, like, you know.
Right.
Making sure that I've got the zone map correctly, right in front of me, um, things like that. I just think it does help to have slides.
Okay.
Thank you.
We can do that. All right, um, so we've got some content here about modifying special permit thresholds, which I, I have a sense as to what your opinion will be on that. Consolidating specific uses, this ties back to much of the discussion we just had, where you have all these disparate. Very specific uses that are like, very much like other things. So let, let's consider combining those into larger use groups. Um, add and refine additional uses. Uh, Clifton asked us to take a look at. Including adult-oriented establishment regulations, so we provided some recommendations to that effect. Um. Outdoor vendors. And here, so here's a little additional information, as you could see, only allowed in the GC sixty and TC eighty. Uh, that's your existing regulation on that. The adult-oriented establishments, as I said, we developed recommended regulations for this, and very quick. The whole reason to have this regulation to identify this use is so that you can regulate it. So that you can limit it to an area and have regulations. If you don't do that. Wherever you have a like use, like an adult bookstore, it can go wherever you allow bookstores. Or video store, or a sex shop can go wherever you allow retail. An adult, not that they're building new adult movie, motion picture theaters anymore, but otherwise it could go wherever you allow movie theaters. So the value of adopting this regulation and assigning it to a place and putting regulations around it is so that you can control it. It's not to introduce it or encourage it.
No.
Okay.
And you can't just ban it. You can't just say.
It's protected by the First Amendment.
Right, but you have to put it somewhere.
Yeah, you gotta put it somewhere. Yeah, exactly. Yep.
Um, so that's that. Uh, we have a recommendation. Now, this work would not be accomplished through our zoning work. It is a recommendation for consideration, so we, we would.
Yeah, we talked about this, yeah.
We would give it shape, describe it, outline what it looks like, the benefits of it, and then. And then it's up to, uh, you know, it's up to the town and, and your, your architectural site design review and. And, uh, and other members of, of the community to really take action on this.
This goes along with the, like you said, the architectural design review board, right?
It, it, it does, it does. It would, it would, they would assume a large amount of the responsibility in reviewing applications for consistency. With village district design guidelines.
Right.
But it has to be adopted by your legislative body, right?
And then would have to formulate those village district design guidelines.
Yes, it would be a separate e- effort. But it's, it falls within our scope to make these recommendations and to the extent we can to give them some shape and direction.
Yep.
Um, additionally, a recommendation to. Re- consider reviewing the floating zones, so I'd like you all to take a look at your floating zones, think about, are these still effective for us? Do we still want to allow for these zones to be landed anywhere? Or do we want to essentially take what we have already? And just convert them into base zoning districts and remove any language associated with, uh. With landing them somewhere else in the town.
I hate floating zones.
In short.
In short.
In short, it should be very short and very abbreviated.
It's my two cents.
Our, our next steps are to, for, for the items that we discussed this evening, we have agreement on. What we will do is we will draft the actual recommendation, which is comprised of. A memorandum that outlines exactly how the zoning would be amended. The purpose for that, the potential impacts. And, uh, and then if we a- agree upon, uh. That information, that memorandum, as it's written, we table it, and that's what you would bring forward to a motion at a later, a later date. So obviously added to this next steps is for you, the commission, to review all of this content. For us to reconvene, to find, uh, to, uh, complete reviewing it. And, um, and then to agree to what we wanna move forward with and, and what we wanna leave behind. Right, our next regularly scheduled date following our, our schedule would be on January twenty-third. Now, I will, I will, Cliff and I will talk either tomorrow or Friday, um, about our next steps going forward. And about another potential meeting in January or February, as it may be, so that we can maintain our progress. All right, and anything else?
No, I think that's all good. Motion is in order.
Make the motion, well.
I'll make, I'll move to adjourn.
Okay. Your motion to adjourn, there's a second.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, good night everyone. I, I appreciate, um, I appreciate it. It was a, a very productive meeting, and I appreciate everyone's contribution, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much for this, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.